All right, welcome everyone. I'll call this November 4th Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to order. And we will start out with roll call. So I'm Mark Baughman. I'm obviously here. Karthik Setharvan.
Here.
TC Labby. Josh Amato.
Here.
Karen Malcolm.
Here.
And I will tell you that Rotuja Indipray has, is not able to be here and Mike Bresko is not able to be here, but we have the five of us, so we have a quorum and continue with our business. Amber, do you want to read the meeting accessibility statement?
Yes, one moment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 2025, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual planning commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To join or view the meeting via Zoom, please use the link HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash Z O O M dot U S forward slash J forward slash nine one zero seven six eight nine seven eight six nine, or call in via mobile or landline dialing U S two five three two one five eight seven eight two. Code is nine one zero seven six eight nine seven eight six nine. To view live, you can visit the city website, or the city YouTube channel, or Comcast Channel 21 within Sammamish. To view the meeting later, the meetings are loaded and available the next day. Thank you.
Thanks, Amber. So next approval of this evening's agenda, and on the agenda this evening, we have a discussion and public hearing on the 2022 docket. So anybody have any comments or corrections for the agenda? Nope. So we'll call the agenda approved by common consent, approval of the minutes from our October 21st meeting. And I was talking about development regulations. Anybody have any corrections for the October 21st meeting minutes? Nope. Okay, good. We'll call those approved by common consent. And next, public comment on non-agenda items. So again, we're going to be talking about the docket this evening. So anybody that would like to make public comment on other items, now's the time. Amber, do we have anybody?
Yes, we do. I'll go to our first caller. Caller one, you may give comment.
Hello there, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney here, Sammamish. Comment tonight, and I will speak at the public hearing as well later on, but the comment tonight is, odds are, many of you have taken a little bit of a dive into the city's BLUMA, Bluma EIS. But in case you haven't, I recommend watching the city council meeting on October 19th. And then there was a two-hour study session-ish, a little over two hours, on October 28th, which was a Thursday, kind of an odd day, but a lot of important information was talked about at that meeting. Then on November 1st, the day before Election Day, there was nothing about Bluma EIS, but I gave a public comment that would like to encourage you to watch about the difference between election and direction. Two totally different things that are much different in their scope, time, orders of magnitude, et cetera. It was real clear in this last election that for many people, it was a one-trick pony. They were only focused on the shape of growth. And for others, there were quite a few other parts involved in Sammamish. And I suggest that you take a look at this because I am going to be advocating for soon, picking up a common cause direction to level set information to the various growth camps in the city that have strong ideologies, predisposed positions, factual positions, et cetera. But it's time to gather data and see if we can bring the community a little bit kicking and screaming to a common cause position to unify some inspirational, aspirational aims to move the city forward. That's my non-agenda comment. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. And we do have another caller. Caller two, you're unmuted. Please give comment.
Hi, this is Mary Wicker, and I live at 408 208 Avenue Northeast in Sammamish.
I think we lost Mary?
Yeah, I think we did.
Hello, I had to unmute again. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we have you.
Yes, we can hear you.
So I just want to say I looked at the long-term calendar, and it appears that you guys have one more visioning meeting in December, which is very important. Sometimes little words make a big difference. And I just wanted to talk for regular public comment tonight on non-agenda to just say, it is really hard in the city to get stuff done. It is really hard to get big things done. It is really hard to get little things done. But we have to do both of those, just like at your house, in your life, your family, in your job, and the fun things that you do even for your hobbies. You have to do the big and the little things. So it's, I've been doing this almost seven years now, because in the past, you had to attend the meeting, you had to listen, the committees were always disbanded, the full thing has to come in for the city council, and you really have to advocate really hard to get even small, basic things done. My one example is getting the steep slopes legend put on the map in the comp plan that was nicely presented without any information about what the thing was. That took me three years to get that done, to get a docket in. And they said they couldn't change the comp plan. And then over time, they actually realized they had to change the comp plan every year or had the opportunity to do that. And that's when the docket process first came to be. So there are some small things, like I can tell you, there's a couple, I think it's been two different groups calling in. They live on a public road in Sammamish, but it's not a very long road or a very big road, but it's potholy and, you know, the safety isn't great. And they'd really like it paved, but it's really hard to get in the city's pavement program. And the people have been doing a really good job advocating for it, but it's just really hard to get that done. So that's yet another example of how, you know, if there's a minority or a small group of people or something very key to their area, it's extremely hard to do. So even tonight, you might hear about some things that might get said that are just seem like they're really small things, but they really make a difference. For example, in clearing and grading, the city here, they were using a 50 cubic yard exemption for a long time that should not have been allowed at all for critical areas. In zero square feet, you should be having a clearing grade review. And it took me from September 2018 all the way through 2019 to get one sentence put in about that. So the one thing I just wanted to say is I really appreciate the work that you guys do. I think you're a fantastic planning commission. I'm really glad that this stuff comes to you. I know in past years, it wasn't, there was so much disconnect between city council and the planning commission that it was not really worth your while to do. But then it really has changed over the past few years, and you guys have done that through leadership, and through your involvement, through your knowledge, and through your studying questions. So I just wanted to thank you again for that, and say little things need to get done, medium things need to get done, and big things get done. So appreciate your help in whatever we do tonight for agenda topics. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. And that was our last caller.
All right. Thanks, Paul and Mary, and thank you, Amber. Next, we're going to move on to our new business for this evening, which is the discussion and then a public hearing about the 2022 comprehensive plan docket requests. So Evan, I see you popped on here. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, planning commissioner. Give us just one second to get the presentation pulled up for you.
You'd think after however long it's been now, a year and a half, that I'd be prepared with a dad joke or something for these kind of pauses, but somehow I haven't quite gotten there yet.
Give us just one moment.
I'll take this as a sign of efficiency that we got ahead of them.
All right, I think we caught back up. You were too efficient. And Mark, you should, you should work on those dad jokes. We could use them in those gaps. All right. Thank you.
Evan, just really quick, can you switch to presentation mode? Right now, we have, yeah. So it's the display settings at the top. There we go. Thank you.
And we're back. Third time's a charm. All right, we are digging into the 2020 docket request tonight. So good evening, planning commission. My name is Evan Fisher, and I'm a senior management analyst with DCD. Tonight, I'll provide a presentation on the 2022 docket requests and staff's recommendations. Afterwards, the planning commission will hold a public hearing, deliberate, and make a recommendation to the city council on which requests should be docketed. The docket is an annual process for considering text amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, or development regulations, or site-specific land use map amendments. Anyone is able to submit a docket request as long as they do so by the annual deadline of 5:00 PM on the first Monday of August of each year. Next slide. Give us just one more second. We're afraid we're now broadcasting to all of Sammamish, the notes page. So give us just one second. Apologies.
Okay, what did the Pacific Ocean say to the Atlantic Ocean? Nothing. They just waved. I see some head shaking. That's a good sign.
I believe that joke only works at Cape Horn.
All right. Thank you for your patience, and that was a good one, Mark. We will start again with this slide here as a reminder of what the docket process is. So the docket is an annual process for considering text amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, or development regulations, or site-specific land use map amendments. Anyone is able to submit a docket request as long as they do so by the annual deadline of 5:00 PM on the first Monday of August of each year. Next slide, please. The first step in the process is deciding which proposals should be put on the docket for consideration in the coming years. Any items that are set on the docket go through legislative review process, where they'll be fully reviewed and considered. An easy way to think about this process is we are making a list of things to be worked on in the future and not reviewing each item in detail now. After tonight's public hearing, the city council will have a public hearing on December 7th and vote on a resolution to set the docket. Next slide. Staff have analyzed each of the docket requests based on the criteria spelled out in Title 24A. Those criteria are, how do the docket requests align with staff work plan items? Is there budget to complete the work? Is there staff availability to complete a full review of the requests? And are the proposals consistent with current staff policies and priorities? Next slide. Now we'll take a look at the five docket requests we received this year and the staff recommendation for each. The first request was submitted by city staff and is a proposed text amendment. The request asks for the addition of roadway segment and corridor level of service standards to the comprehensive plan and development regulations, to address transportation level of service standards and capital facility needs associated with environmental impacts. Staff recommend docketing this request as it aligns with all of the criteria spelled out in Title 24A, and is consistent with city council work plan priorities. Next line. Request two, three, four, and five are all citizen-initiated and propose text amendments to the development regulations. Request two has four parts pertaining to adjusting clearing and grading regulations. The first part requests the city to adjust the city's threshold for when SEPA is triggered during clearing and grading. Staff do not recommend docketing this item as it does not align with staff's current or upcoming work plans. Additionally, as there is no staff availability, we would need consultant support for this work, which we currently do not have the budget for. Lastly, this is not consistent with current policies or programs, as the city does not feel like it has an issue with the existing SEPA thresholds. Next line. Back. Yep, thanks. The second part of request two is asking the city to set lifetime limits on types of clearing and grading. Staff do not recommend docketing this item as it does not meet the decision criteria of Title 24A, and would be resource-intensive and difficult to administer and track. Next line. Part three of request two asks the city to consider a 100 cubic yard exemption threshold for clearing and grading and lowering thresholds for critical areas. Staff do not recommend docketing this item as it has been addressed as part of development regulation updates phase two. Changes made as part of phase two to SMC 16 dot 15 dot 050 require a permit for clearing and grading involving more than five cubic yards or 1,000 square feet of area. These changes also require a permit for clearing and grading in critical drainage areas involving more than two cubic yards or 200 square feet of area. And additionally, a permit is always required unless exempt in critical areas. Next line. Part four of request two is asking the city to review and update the definition for fill. Staff do not recommend docketing this item as the issue is already addressed by requirements found in SMC 16 dot 15 oh nine oh two F, which says fill material period, except in approved sanitary landfill, only earth materials that have no rock or similar irreductible material with a maximum dimension greater than 18 inches shall be used. Irreductible. Next slide. Request three asks the city to consider updating its tree regulations by specifying pruning limits on tree or plant species, providing tree removal options for landowners with parcels in cases of problem trees or lack of water, and developing rules or guidance around removing invasive species, right plant, right place, and encouraging snags as appropriate. Staff recommend this item be deferred to the urban forest management work plan timeline as tree policy and code updates are scheduled to take place in 2324. Staff do not recommend docketing this item at this time. Next, please. Request four asks the city to consider developing or clarifying lighting regulations to specify the number of allowed lights, location of lighting, lighting types, size, brightness, shielding, and allowed use to reduce heat and light pollution that will promote wildlife and salmon population recovery. Staff do not recommend docketing this item as it does not meet the decision criteria of Title 24A, and would add considerable staff time and questions about how these regulations would be enforced. Instead, staff recommend that this item could be an educational effort instead of something that is codified. Next line. Request five asks the city to develop and implement septic management program that would inventory the city's remaining septic systems, perform outreach on septic system owners, create loan programs for future septic connections, identify septic system failing points, and identify when sewers should be connected. Staff recommend that this item be considered as part of the development regulations updates phase three, and do not recommend docketing this item at this time. To summarize, staff recommend docketing item one, but do not recommend docketing items two through five. Item one aligns with city council-directed work plan priorities and is currently budgeted for and staffed for. Items two through five do not meet the Title 24A's decision criteria, and should be, or should be deferred to the urban forest management work plan or phase three development regulations. Just a reminder of the next steps. After tonight's public hearing with the planning commission, the city council will be holding a public hearing on December 7th to consider the docket request and set a resolution for the docket. And with that, Kelly and I are happy to answer any questions you might have on this year's docket requests, as well as the staff recommendations.
Okay, does anyone have questions? And just as a reminder, we'll do questions on the presentation, then open a public hearing, take public comment, and then have a discussion with, oh, I'm sorry, make a motion, have a discussion, and make a recommendation to the city council. That's the sequence. So this is the part where we have questions for Evan and our first staff. Now's the time to ask those questions. Anyone?
Evan, this TC, I have a question for you. If docket requests are denied, is there a period for resubmital or a period for reconsideration? Or does it have, does it have to flow into the next session?
I guess typically, if a docket request doesn't sort of naturally align with future, with upcoming work plan items, like in the case of some of these where they wouldn't naturally align with phase three or at the UFMP work plan, then they would have to wait and be submitted next year on the, on the docket for next year. Kelly, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. I would have to review 24A, which outlines the process. And I'd have to follow up with you if there's anything more to add to that.
Karen, it looked like you had a question.
Yes. Could you please go back to request four?
Sure. Give us just one moment.
Okay, great. My question is on the policy and program consistency. And we already have code about lighting. The request here goes further into location, et cetera. But why isn't it, why isn't there a checkmark by policy and program consistency?
That's a great question. So the city does have, currently has lighting standards as part of their development regulations. The reason we don't check, we didn't consider this one consistent with policy and programs is that it's taking the next step, and it really raises, for us, questions of enforcement. So Kelly, I'll let you speak to this in just a moment. But it's hard for staff to imagine how some of these regulations could be enforced without extensive additions to staff. Kelly, I'll let you speak to this.
Yeah, this is a, we do have code within 21A related to lighting levels, and it is associated with security, lighting. It is extremely hard for the city to enforce, because our program is a code compliance division that works eight to five. And most of these complaints come, obviously, during the nighttime when it comes to brightness. We just do not have, we just, our code compliance team is one LTE and one full-time staff person. And we just, we just don't have the capacity, or the program is not set up to be able to have a 24/7 code compliance program. And so this one is really difficult for us to enforce, even with the current lighting standards as they exist today.
Right. I certainly don't want to put any more burden on the city staff. I think you're stretched to the limit. But in the discussions about budget, there is actually a request on the budget for next year that there be a person added who would be, you know, the person who would go around and check these things, kind of police the whole thing, not only, you know, this kind of stuff, but, you know, building code, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if it would be putting the cart before the horse to increase these lighting standards, which in my opinion are very important. Or if we should wait until next year and see if that person is hired and then resubmit.
So just to clarify, the position that is up for consideration as part of the midbuy is a land use site inspector, and their role and responsibility would be doing compliance inspections for construction projects, so projects that are under construction. Again, this would be during regular business hours. So this is not a code compliance position. And even if it was, this one, again, how our program is set up is, you know, it would be harder to enforce these regulations, because we don't have on-call staff. We don't have staff that is available and can come in to verify this. And we do need, you know, if we were to penalize or fine someone who has violated this code, it is really hard for us to provide that burden of proof, because we are not available to see that as the violation is occurring. It's very difficult to take photo documentation of light violations, and so forth. So again, it's just, we have a logistical challenge from the code compliance and enforcement perspective when it comes to lighting standards.
Totally understand. Thank you.
So can I just insert myself in this one and ask a question? I guess all of that discussion seems like it's about enforcement of existing situations, which I realize is a big part of it. But isn't a part of it also, and I believe that there was some allusion to it, or maybe it was written directly in there, about development standards? So what the code says about what you can build when you build a new house or a series of new houses? And that, to me, seems like it's not the same issue, because it's, it's, you know, a plan check kind of a thing, and could go with the development phase three regulations, which, like I say, that's not, I go out and stand on somebody's dock and measure the light. It's reviewing the plans that get submitted. Am I misinterpreting that, misunderstanding the docket request, or misunderstanding the staff's recommendation?
No, I don't think you are. I think the problem comes mostly, most of the time it's with the bulb. So we can design a light fixture, we can design a light. But once, you know, as part of a development application, and we can review it to make sure it's meeting the standards, it's then what happens when that is turned over to a private property owner, and they have the flexibility to change that bulb, that lumen projection, then that's where code compliance could have to come in and, and address it. So sure, we can definitely address it during design standards as part of phase three. I just caution that, you know, from an enforcement perspective, this would be very hard to enforce. So it's, it's just, it's a cautionary tale, I guess, is what I'm providing that information.
Josh had another question.
Yeah. Is there the time, the timing of this process? And Evan, you might have covered this, and I glossed over it. Is it required, the timing that we have in RCW or in our own code, that we start this process when we do the entire docket request process?
Kelly, do you have more specifics on that? I think you might be more familiar with Title 24A than I am.
I sure do. So Josh, just can I ask a clarifying question? Are you speaking of an applications, or do you like setting that deadline and how that process works?
So I'll give you the reason for my question. Maybe that'll help you answer. The reason is because there's, having gone through this a few times, often it is that, you know, there's no work plan alignment or no staff capacity. And so it doesn't seem to align very well with the council's process of setting their work plan, which means unless someone happens to deliver a docket item that has already been decided is important by council, it's going to have to wait a whole year to be brought back up and reviewed again. Right? So it seems like a two-year process rather than a one-year, you know, process. So it seems like a two-year process rather than a one-year, you know, process and, and that, you know, if that process can be changed so it fits better with that, then that's great, if not, I understand, but that's the reason for my question.
Yeah, absolutely, we do have some flexibility. I do not believe that RCW directs cities on, on how that works. It does, it does ask that we have a docketing process for an annual docket process. I think one really key component that's important is that we do have a natural review and develop, review and update to our development regulations that align with the comprehensive plan amendment. So this would be our critical areas ordinance, as you all remember, this will also be our tree regulations ordinance as well, that, that, that timing is 23/24, critical areas is 23/24. And so I think staff can do a better job of kind of educating the community that we do have a, a cycle of review and updates to some of our development regulations and, and to provide that information. So members who are interested in proposing development regulations to be docketed could ask, hey, would it be better just to wait until we get to that, that, that natural cycle, or is it better? This is so important, we need, need to deal with it now, but I think we need to start, we should do a better job of providing that information. Because we do have a couple of requests here tonight that we are recommending defer to when we handle those code sections and a, you know, very specifically, and there will be scoping that will go along with that, and we can discuss taking up those issues at that time.
Okay, thank you.
TC, I see your hand raised there, did you have another question?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to piggyback off of what Josh was saying, I think that, you know, there should be a, a period where if, if there's specific textual changes or kind of verbiage that needs to be added or removed to a specific request, that the requester be able to revise what it is that's being put in front of us. I, I just kind of feel like this is a, a very narrow window for folks to get a request in, but I, I understand it's the process, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to do it, and then table it for a few weeks or a month, and then revisit it if there are any resubmissions. I guess maybe that wasn't so much a co-comment or a question, it was a comment.
Yeah, my question is like, there were some of these requests from Mary Victor that we said we would cover as part of the development code and so on. Can you just lead us through the two to five, what is the final disposition here? Which ones are not getting covered in any other processes and would be dropped? I'm interested in knowing that. I thought the number two, request two, the disposition wasn't clear to me.
Keep going, will you go back a couple more?
Maybe in the final slide, if you can just put like, which ones are covered through other processes and which ones are not, it would be helpful for us. At the end of the day, these are citizens who are presenting docket requests, I think we owe to them a, a clear message as to how we are handling these requests. So that's my comment rather, yeah.
Great, thank you. And just to, just to confirm, is there, was there an ask there to go back through any slides? We were coordinating a little bit.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So back to request two, first item of request two is dealing with the, the SEPA threshold limits in this one. Isn't something that is being grouped into Phase Two or Phase Three or any other work plan items, this is something that staff is just not recommending at this time? Next slide, please. The same is true with this develop, develop lifetime limits on certain types of clearing and grading, and the issue for us with this one goes back to that same enforcement idea that it would be very difficult for staff to figure out how to enforce, how much has been cleared from a site over a lifetime. So this is something that we don't recommend at this time for Phase Three or any other work. Next slide. This item is something that we feel has been covered as part of the Phase Two Development Regulations, and I'm happy to quickly read back through. So changes made as part of Phase Two to SMC 16 dot 15 dot 05, 05O require permit for clearing and grading involving more than five cubic yards or 1,000 square feet of area. So the request here consider 100 cubic yards, we've actually lowered that well beyond the 100 cubic yard threshold to five cubic yards, so we feel like this one's been covered. Next slide, please. Again, we, as staff feel that the, the definition for fill as executed in 16 dot 15 dot 09 O two F describes fill as accept, except and approved sanitary landfill, only earth materials that have no rock or similar irreducible materials with a maximum dimension greater than 18 inches shall be used. And from some of the, the materials that were part of the docket request, there were concerns of, you know, large, large chunks of concrete being put in, in with fill, or sections of dead trees, or there, you know, extreme cases where car tires get put in fill. We feel that the definition, the working definition 16 15 09 O covers that. So we, we currently don't have this slated for any more review. Next slide, please. So these items, we feel that there is potential alignment with programs and policies in the UFMP, and like Kelly said, something that we, we will be looking at in 23 and 24, and so we're just asking for a pause until that time.
This one?
Next, please. I think Kelly covered this one well.
Yep.
And then the last one. Yep, sewer and septic is a, is a big conversation point and a big policy decision that needs the, the time and care of the Planning Commission and the City Council as part of Phase Three. And because Phase Three is something that we're beginning scoping for and is a potential work plan item, that we, we just ask for this one to hang tight for the full review that will come with Phase Three.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
And I, I have a couple of things to add too. For those docket requests that we are recommending defer to 23 24 as part of the Urban Forest Management Plan, our Phase Three, staff is diligent in keeping that list. You may recall in the 2019 docket, Mary Johnson, Mary Richter had proposed some items, development regulations to be considered that related to the Urban Forest Management Plan, and we actually did incorporate those as implementation strategies, and those were approved by City Council. So we, when we say we're deferring or not, just, you know, passing it off, we do track that and we do make sure that, that is included to those work plan items when those come up. So we are very consistent in doing so. Additionally, Josh, I wanted to come back to your question because I don't think I answered it, related to how can we align the docketing process with our budget and work plan process? Because it is on a two-year cycle, and you're correct, when we adopt our budgets, that really is adopting a two-year work plan. And we don't have in our budget professional services funding to, to assist staff in getting this work through City Council and the Planning Commission. So one thing staff can do is that as part of the 23 24 budget cycle, which is just around the corner, I mean, we will start working on that second quarter of next year, we can propose to City Council that they consider professional consultant support services to support the docket for, you know, for 23 and 24 so that there is, there are resources available to see this work through. That just has not happened to date, which is why it puts staff in a really awkward position when we say we don't have the resources and budget, because we don't, and it hasn't been budgeted. And so I think that is something we could commit to recommending to City Council for consideration, to help facilitate this process a little better. So I hope, I just wanted to come back and answer that question, I, sorry, I did not do that originally.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, that would be something good to consider because if residents feel like they're just hitting a brick wall every time they do something like this, then we're less likely to get responses and quality responses. So it's just, thanks for, thanks for considering.
Absolutely, I absolutely agree, so thank you.
Okay, other questions? Looks like no more questions. Okay, thank you. So next we'll do the public, open the public hearing for public comment on this docket recommendation. So Amber, I don't remember, do you need to read the, the statement again, or can we just do the public hearing, public comments?
We can do the public comment, and let me see what we have ready. One moment. Okay, caller one, you are unmuted.
Good evening, funding commissioners, Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'll start a comment a little bit to talk to Commissioner Amato's question that may not be on point, but then again, it may. Both Mary Victor and I sat through the two cycles of updating Title 24A. There was a process in 2017, it got put on pause, and then it got finished in 18, or maybe it was 2016 and 19, it was roughly a year or two apart. And on the issue of the two years, every two years coming back with something, that at the time, as I recall, would hamstring the city as much as a private individual if the cycle was every two years. And I'm not sure I have this right, but I seem to recall that there couldn't be, it's okay for the city to come up with something annually, but not in individuals. And then the other part to the answer is, is that, in my opinion, we're not overwhelmed as a city with docket requests every year. What you say is true, if, if they do not align with things, there's an issue, but having those things come up helps inform a council whether they do want to potentially alter policy to deal with something a year or two later. So there's sort of yin and yang to how the whole process works, and in my opinion, there's not a flood of docket items, so I think that the one-year cycle is a, is a, a good thing. Okay, next, I'm not going to read the written comment I wrote into the record, just will summarize by saying that in the roughly eight to nine years, I've been going to meetings and watching docket requests much closer, have been involved longer than that, but not at a, at a deep level. I haven't seen a docket request as wide open or as broad in scope as what the city is asking. Because when you really read a Bluma EIS, every single element, every single background element has got potential for change, there's no clear direction yet from the council as to which alternative it's going to go on. And to me, it would open up a very potentially concerning precedent to allow very broad scope docket items before they're more clearly defined. I will just summarize and say, in my opinion, I think finishing whatever the EIS ultimately ends up to be, which may or may not be what it is now, and then coming up with proposals because of that by the city, and then bringing those before a docket makes more sense to me. Then I, I mentioned I would talk a little bit about underarching things in my comment, and this could take lord knows how much time, I'm not going to get into any of that, I'm just going to mention my truths, and my truths are not meant to cause confrontation, not meant to cause angst, they're just meant to be transparent in sharing my opinion from studying all this issue. The core issue at the foundation of this docket is that it's dealing with volume over capacity, concurrency, segment levels, and integrating them into the comp plan. Well, the core issue is, and still, or has been, and still is, that the volume over capacity numbers that are within a range of discretion for a council to choose, that were set initially in 2018 as an interim ordinance, in 2019 as a public, or excuse me, as a permanent ordinance. And these are directional arguments for the city, and I know there's a lot of political dimensions involved, I get that. Again, I'm sharing my I statements. RCW 3678 070, topic six, a transportation element that implements and is consistent with the land use element. The 2018 V over C ordinance and the 2019 permanent ordinance were not consistent with the comp plan. The GMHB did not find that initially, there were several elements that they did not rule that were substantive in the Jaren case, they were mostly administrative, including the EIS. But they held the door open on one inconsistency with the comp plan, and ultimately, and I'm really summarizing, if, if any of you want to meet and have coffee, we could spend a long time on these topics, I've tried to keep it short. In summarizing this, GMHB, Growth Management Hearing Board, ultimately found that the V over C approach was inconsistent with the comp plan and did not support growth management goals one, four, and five, which is urban growth, housing, and economic development. This Bluma EIS still does not do that, because the amount of growth it is planning for is roughly 900 housing units, roughly 700 in the pipeline, 200 extra, and 400,000 feet of commercial. Our comp plan has way more than that planned in it, we haven't solved this issue. The other thing that I would call out is there is a WAC, which is W A C three sixty five, one ninety six, eight forty, item three C, that has a sentence in it that counties and cities should set level of service to reflect realistic expectations consistent with the achievement of growth aims. Setting levels of service too high could, under some regulatory strategies, result in no growth. As a deliberate policy, this would be contrary to the act. This is still the case. Now, as all of you know, you've seen the things I've sent, I stayed out of this election completely. My goal was to have no influence in how this went. I'm interested in the direction for the city and level setting with information. There are those who want almost no growth, there are those that want the current comp plan, and there are those that support optimizing. There's information.
My apologies, Mr. Stickney, that is all the time available for your public comment.
I was done anyway.
Thank you.
Just consider those underarching topics, that's it.
Thank you. And I will unmute our second caller. Caller two, you are unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I think she unmutes me and then I unmute me and I get muted back, sorry about that. Anyway, thanks, Amber. This is Mary Victor, I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast, Samamish. So thanks for the great discussion on the dockets that were submitted. I'll start with the easy one, docket five is on septic. I did email in a separate email for each of these today, just to provide background for you. We really do need to start dealing with septic, septic, and I'm glad to have it as part of Development Regulations Phase Three. So when you vote and make your planning commission recommendation, please say that you would like to have that, so that goes to City Council, and that Kelly and all the lists that are kept, it actually gets officially on there, so that would be great. The same thing for the item three docket, which is the trees, plants, and vegetation. People have been giving feedback for a long time, we've been waiting for the Urban Forestry Management Plan since 2015, and to hear that it's not even going to be looked at till 2023 really hurts. But I will say that Mary Johnson did a couple dockets with me, and she had four items that we call her non-dockets, because they were docketed and they were going to be put in Urban Forestry Management Plan, and I believe Kelly is going to pick those up, although not as soon as we would like to see, but I think it will happen. And the earlier it happens, it would be better for everybody. And then I wanted to speak to just a couple things on And then I wanted to speak to just a couple things on, um, item, uh, two, on the clearing and grading and fill. I, I liked all the comments that we had from people on the presentation by, um, Evan Fisher as well. But I think a couple of things are getting missed. In development regs phase two, there is some things you actually have to have a permit now to clear and grade in a critical area, and there are lower thresholds. What the 100 cubic yard threshold is, that's an existing SEPA threshold that the city just doesn't reference. And that's so someone can't dig up, clear and grade, then build a house, clear and grade, then sell the house, the next people clear and grade where the clearing limit is, and then the next people move in and change their rockery around. And you just have this clearing and grading over and over and over, particularly in a critical area that goes way over 100 cubic yards in a lifetime. And just to show you that it can be done, um, in my email, I sent code that I copy pasted from King County code today where it says, um, if your fill is, um, more than three feet in vertical depth, you're not going to get the exemption. And if you're cumulative overtime, if you don't involve more than 100 cubic yards, then you get exemptions. But there are those limits. Also, um, on the fill, if you're filling in a hole or something where there's voids, right now Evan read it that the city has 18 inches as your maximum dimension. King County uses 12 as a maximum dimension, and I am worried that people will just take dirt and rocks and leaves and kind of lumps of stumps and throw them in a hole where kids or people or cars or wildlife will get stuck in those eventually because it becomes like a Sumatran tire, um, a tiger trap. I, I do see that the code doesn't allow tires. There was a lot of tires that were used in the past, and there was some crumb rubber into rivers that happened this last year. It was publicized in the news. So I want to make sure that doesn't happen. But I believe that there are just some very tiny code changes that could be, um, picked out of what I emailed today that could be implemented as part of even the development regulations phase two, because you've already got clearing and grading in there. You've already got budget, you've already got staff, and they're just little things that were missing that I hadn't caught before to put in when I was part of the stakeholder groups that gave input. So I would like to see the things I emailed in considered. It's just a change in a definition to fill, dealing with voids, and, um, just making sure that people aren't doing things over and over. And also in development reg space two, they are going to be supposed to be doing some recordation of things. So you actually know what happened on a critical area a lot, which should have happened a little bit in the past, wasn't, and it should happen better with the new code. So, um, I would like to have that considered. And then on the docket four, which is the lighting, I thought what Karen Malcolm had said was right on. It is very important if you've ever tried to sleep at night with lights going directly in your bedroom window and you have to shut out the light every day to go to sleep, it's not a good thing. I do understand, um, Kelly's position on not having a lot of staff, but with lights, if there is code, and if someone takes a picture and reports that the city can work off that, and if needed, be, there could be a code violation recorded. And then that way they either have to change out the fixtures that are illegal or remove them. And if you don't want to do that, fine, then you should do it on education, like the Kokoni Work Group is trying to educate people about lighting. A lot of times people just don't know the lights are on or don't realize they leave them on or don't know they're on a timer or whatever. Um, but it is very important. And I thought what Mark Baughman said was actually the most important in, um, the first, uh, thing that I sent with photos in it. I took pictures of lights and things that are pretty annoying when you drive around. And there's some new houses. Bill Way also said it. He's, um, retired from the watershed company, but, um, he was saying, you know, there's just so many people, they build a house now, and then they put lights all over the walls to light it up like a castle. And they don't really have a use, like, in most of the houses, as you drive around, there's a light by each doorway and a light by the garage, and they're not all on at one time. But the new houses, they're really lighting up everything. And I just think that's going over the top, and particularly around the lakes, you don't want that because it affects, um, the fish and the other things. So, um, I do think that the lighting, um, can be looked at to make sure that the existing code actually covers residential uses and misuses. And that if there are problems, there's something that people can have if they can't just talk and get their neighbor to change it. And I think the number of fixtures that we have, um, or allow on lights, um, or on buildings is really important for the development code. And then anything we can do to try to help wildlife corridors and fish with the lighting through education, that's really important because, as you know, the urban forestry management plan with wildlife corridors and habitat isn't going to come before anybody before 2023 or 2024 unless some of it's coming in 2022. So I think we need to think about the impacts that we have whenever we build things. And, um, so I did lighting, I did the trees, I did. So, so pretty much, um, if you didn't, I know I sent in stuff today because I didn't have time to set it in half, but if you haven't read what I sent in, I think it is useful to, um, know about. And then just generally with regard to the process, Miriam Leitner had done a great job, um, rewriting chapter 24, which allowed us to have this. You can put in stuff anytime there is a cutoff date, which would help is to know what the city has on their work plan, because I have to submit blindly, not knowing what the city is going to do. Like, if the city could admit their stuff, I don't know, two weeks earlier, then we would know. If you have a two-year.
My apologies, Ms. Victor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I hope you can read my emails and that we could carry that information forward to the city council meeting on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one other caller. Caller three, you are unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, Jan Bird, Samamish. And, uh, my apologies, I sent you a wrong attachment. Thank you, Josh, for cleaning me in. Uh, so whatever I sent, uh, around four o'clock, please delete that because I had nothing to do with it. It's just made of plant society stuff. So anyway, uh, my comment tonight, I did send the second one out. Hopefully it's the right one this time. But I'm asking that you not recommend advancing, uh, docket request number one by the city because as already stated, the city's already in the middle of working on the EIS, and it seems like that should be completed first. It just seems like if the EIS was finished through a complete, you know, public process, and the council has adopted a preferred alternative, and then they have made changes to the comprehensive plan based on that EIS, then it seems like that would be the time to recommend it. But without a complete public process to identify the proposed changes to all the comprehensive plan elements, it just seems like it's not appropriate because it seems like it's giving the city the right to rework the comprehensive plan with that public input. Because usually when we do the uh, comprehensive plan, you know, it goes on for quite a lengthy public, uh, period. Uh, in quotes, it says, "The comprehensive plan amendments may include, but are not limited to transportation element, capital facilities plan element, land use element, and others." So it seems like it's opening up the whole plan with that. And my understanding is that isn't until around 2024. So, uh, I'd say the city should finish its EIS and other related studies first, then have them submit a complete and clear comprehensive plan and development regulation docket request over the next year. So thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. And that was our last caller. Back to you, Chair Baughman.
All right. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Um, so in order to have a discussion, we should have a, a motion and a second. Um, I didn't see one included anywhere. Does anyone want to take a shot at it? Don't all fight for the opportunity.
And my apologies there. We did include one on the presentation, but getting the presentation pulled back up tonight, um, with all our tech, technical difficulties may be a bit difficult. So apologies.
How about if I take a shot at it from scratch, which means that I might require some corrections? Um, okay, I, uh, so I'm going to make a motion. I move that we recommend to the city council to move, uh, docket item one to the 2022 docket and further recommend to the city council that they, um, include docket items three, five. I'm sorry, to make sure to track docket item three to the urban forest management plan task. And item four, to the extent that it is code-related, development code-related to the phase three development regulations, and item five to the phase three development regulations. Is that close enough to be interpretable?
Workable, very workable.
Good. Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. About what, uh, what you heard and, uh, what you think we should recommend to council.
I think the, the way you have worded it seems to be the most appropriate way. What did we do with the request two, though? Should we address all of the requests in this motion, or is it okay to kind of not talk about all those requests here? Because the way it is worded, uh, request two is not covered, right, Mark?
Yeah, the reason I, I, I will just speak to that since I made the motion. The reason for that is that while I think that there are a number of things, um, in docket item two that are worthy of discussion. Um, I'm not, it frankly, it's a little bit of a compilation of things that makes it kind of a mess.
Yeah.
And on top of which, those things which I think are valid, like lifetime grading, uh, it, it's difficult for me to envision how the city would e- either enforce that or even monitor that. Um, I'm not su- it seems like that's a, just even though those, I, I, I didn't include it because I think there are some good ideas in there. But I think that needs to somehow be developed further before it can be something of enough substance to to make a work task item. I just don't see how it would be necessarily very productive on the work task, on the work list. Even though there are some fairly good ideas in there, it's, it seems like it's, needs more refinement. That's why I didn't include it.
I think that brings us to a question of the, you know, should we enact only codes that are enforceable? I mean, right, you know, can, can the code contain, I don't know, recommendations or because at the end of the day, then the city is not going to have all the staff to enforce all the code. So I think where do we use the, I don't want to say excuse, but a tenet, you know, um, of, you know, let's discuss only those that needs to be enforceable versus, you know, don't discuss it or, you know, we may not take it this time. So I'm just wondering what, what guides us in that sort of a situation? How do we see, you know, what should be guiding us in that sort of a situation? You know, is the, is the city only having code that's all enforceable? Like, is the city having all the staff to enforce all the codes? I don't know.
Well, I, I think to echo what you're saying and to go a little bit further, part of city staffing is going to be driven by what codes need to be enforced. And if additional regulations are put in place and additional staff is required, then that'll get worked out in a budget cycle and addressed then. But we can't just walk away from things simply because we don't know how to enforce it, even if it's the right thing to do for the city.
I would say I, I agree with that. Um, and I do agree that sometimes having code there for the instance where it becomes an issue is still better than not saying anything. I would also say, though, that I think there's, there's good argument to be made that the city should or any, anybody, right? But the city should do what it can. But try not to create a set of codes or whether it's a, you know, the, the growth management plan or whatever, not create something that becomes every good idea that there is and becomes sort of unwieldy, unwieldy and unusable. Um, you got to find a balance between those two. I don't know what that balance is. That's what all of us have to kind of decide as we go. So you have to, I do think you have to take each idea and decide, is it worthy of including, um, for a variety of reasons, um, but not try to bulk up things so that eventually it just becomes unusable. Um, and you see that happen in other municipalities and other places, right? Where things, I mean, look at our tax code, it's just almost unusable because it's every good idea that ever came up was piled on. So I think there's some validity to deciding what's, even if it's unenforceable, what might be useful someday, but trying to restrain the temptation to create a monster. So I say that maybe here that doesn't apply, right? Maybe you think that those items in number two are worthy of including. But I, I made the motion, so that's where I went with it. I didn't include them.
Got it. I mean, I still think that, you know, I'm in mute. No, okay. So I, I still think that we should have some logical conclusion to the request number two because I mean, it seems to be that we feel that there is a bunch of good ideas in there. So, you know, either it goes into the tracking sheet that Kelly maintains, you know, and it, and it gets resurfaced somehow for further discussion and, you know, some sort of a codification. Uh, I, I would like to see a logical conclusion to where it falls. Um, you know, maybe the city staff can help us here. Uh, how do we deal with it? I certainly like, you know, how TC Labby put it, like, we just cannot, um, ignore certain things because we are not staffed or, you know, it's difficult to enforce. Um, you know, what's the logical way to approach these things? So.
So I guess I would look at it as a logic. I mean, how many times are we dealing with this problem that number two addresses? And I don't know that it's a huge number of, of times. So I don't know. I, I don't personally think that it's something we need to address at this moment. We clearly don't have the staff or capacity. And it doesn't seem like a, you know, big pressing issue of that happens frequently. So I, that's how I would prioritize it.
Yeah, but then we don't have the data collection mechanisms though, right? We do not know, right? There is no anecdotes. I mean, um, you know, for the example, the lighting thing, I do not know if it's a issue or not because we don't encourage, you know, citizens don't even complain about it maybe because they don't know whether they can complain or not. So it's an absence of data for us. I think the grading thing was a little bit, I'm not very familiar with all the codes around grading, but that seemed to be a bit more serious than the lighting, um, issue. So that's where I'm looking at that request two as to what is the logical conclusion for us on the request two.
Karen, you're pretty quiet there. What, uh, what are your thoughts about this?
Well, I just, uh, agree with Kelly that if you don't have the staff to enforce it, there's no point in making the rule. Uh, you know, if you don't enforce all the rules, then people start getting lax in other areas. So there's really no point in having it if you can't enforce it. So. But it should, there should be a place where we can park that, these requests so that in the future, if there's other supporting evidence that this needs to happen, you know, that we can look back and say, yeah, in 2021, we looked at this too. This problem's been around for a while. So I don't know if there is a place for that, Kelly. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was gonna, um, just say we, what has been on our work plan, and unfortunately it, it has had to come off because of other priorities, but I am really pushing it for it this year, upcoming 22, is Title 23, which is code compliance. Um, because this is a program that has not been looked at for a long time, and we need, as a city, and we do have this data. So to answer that question, I do have this data. Um, to review the type of, and for, uh, of cases that the, the city currently handles and where we have really gray area and challenges in our code. Um, so that we, we can be, um, more successful in going after those. And I think one of the questions that we're going to need to ask as part of that update is, do we want to be compliance or do we want to be enforcement? Because there are two different programs, and that is definitely a policy change that I think needs to be discussed, and then we need to develop a, a program appropriately. So, um, we can start addressing some of these issues that our, our code kind of ties us to. Um, and, but yet we don't have, um, the program, the administrative program in place to handle. So um, I'm really looking forward to Title 23 updates. Um, I do oversee the code compliance department. That is my, that is the, um, the team that I lead. Um, and, um, yeah, this is going to be coming to you in 22, and I'm, I'm, I am very excited about it. It's been a long time coming, uh, because we are challenged, for sure. So I think some of these things that we're talking about, because you're right, I, I totally agree with everything that's being said here. There are some, um, we shouldn't limit code changes because we don't have the program to support it, but it is a very fine balance. We just need, we need to work through code compliance, code updates first, and then come back to some of these issues and revisit them once we determine what that looks like.
So a couple of quick notes here. One is, um, if someone's inclined to, uh, move to amend the motion, that's perfectly fine. If you want to do that, um, that's how you could, would make a modification. And, uh, I would also ask if anyone has any comments about. And I would also ask if anyone has any comments about docket item one. There's obviously quite a bit of public comment about it. And I don't know if anyone has any comments to to talk about item one or not, but. It feels like we've kind of ignored that a bit. Apparently, that was not a popular item to suggest. I I would comment that I think. There are some very valid. Points that have been made by folks. About the need to work through the process as a city in the right order. I would also say that I think that what we're doing here is making a list of things to talk about, and so. You know. That that may still allow things to happen in the right order. To say that we have to finish the Blue E I S first before we can even. Put anything on the list that should follow it feels like a slow, arduous way to approach things. I think the comments we've received reflect a hesitation about the potential for jumping ahead of the line, cutting the line. And trying to do something sooner. So. However, I think I'd just say again, we're only making a list of things to do. We're not necessarily. Resolving anything or even deciding to resolve anything. We're just making a list. In fact, we're only suggesting that the city council make a list. Of things to do. So we're a few steps away from that. And I think that frankly, even if we didn't recommend item one, it would probably still end up on the docket anyway. So perhaps that's why there's not a lot of comments from the commission about it. Okay, that's enough talking by me. Who else? Anybody else have comments? Want to make an amendment? Want to change something? Okay, if nobody has any more comments, I'm going to call for a vote. Does anybody want to know what the motion is again? I'll maybe in summary, I'll say we're we're recommending to the council to put one on the. I- item one on the docket for two thousand twenty-two and then have. Part of four and five put put in phase three development regulations. And item three attract to the next discussion about the urban forest management plan. Okay, so that's the motion. I'm gonna take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no. Okay, five to zero, that passes. All right, that's all of our business for this evening. Then we can do. That's it, right? We did our agenda public comment, so we can do the long-term calendar for a second. Right now, we have December second as a regular meeting at six thirty. And then we also actually, after the turn of the new year, have a meeting on the calendar for January sixth. Evan or Kelly, is there any change to that?
And we are still working on that and putting together, finalizing those work plans for two thousand twenty-two. So be patient with us. There will be something, though, so.
Okay, good. Anything else?
Yeah, I actually have one announcement for the planning commission and those listening. On November sixteenth, from twelve thirty to one thirty P M, there will be a community visioning project popcorn with planning event held virtually. For anybody who would like to attend, you can register through connects to mamish.us slash pop, P O P. It's an informational presentation about the community visioning project and. Also, I'd like to just note that there will be a special workshop held for the planning commission during our December second meeting on this on this topic. So. But everybody keep an eye out for popcorn with planning, twelve thirty to one thirty on November sixteenth. And that's it.
And I do have one other thing to add, Evan, really quick. We had a city council meeting, public hearing. On Monday for the school impact fees. Because we did not have a majority of the city council approve the ordinance as recommended by the planning commission. We had to change the meeting on November ninth to a special meeting. So that city council can continue their deliberation and 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 vote on that ordinance. So if you have been following school impact fees. And you want to see how this concludes, tune in for November ninth.
Great. Okay, thank you. Can someone move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
All those in favor of journeying, aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those know, great. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. I appreciate your comments this evening. We will see you for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
December second. Thanks.